We will call to order the special school board meeting. We decided to schedule a special meeting so that we could solicit input from the community. As I think required by the new statute, as well as I think best practices for us when we're instituting kind of a new, pretty broad policy that's going to have a wide effect this year. Just to try to get some feedback from community members about a couple of the key issues with respect to the policy. So, I think probably everybody's aware that New Hampshire Legislature has enacted legislation requiring school boards to adopt a policy prohibiting personal electronic communication devices from bell to bell, opening bell, opening bell of the day to the end of the day in the school. So our current policies for the middle school, that's the current policy anyway. For the high school, we do, our current policy did allow them to use their phones and things like that in between classes or during break periods. That would no longer be allowed. The, the feedback that we're trying to get, I guess, from you folks and from the community is to help us kind of target the policy with what the community thinks are sort of going to be in the best interest of the school and the kids. So, in the notice for the meeting, we included a couple of different things. The first is what the definition of a personal electronic communication device is because it's not specified in the statute. So, there's, there's cell phones totally identified. I think that's an easy, that's an easy one, right? But there's a broad range of different electronic devices that have the, potentially have the capability of being used to communicate, but aren't necessarily primarily a communication device. And so one of the things that we're, that we wanted was some feedback about how broad we want this policy to be. We want it to include everything that has the potential to be used for communication? Or do we want to have it more tailored, more limited to things that are primarily being used for communication? So that's the first issue. And there's some different definitions, right? So basically, different schools have enacted different, different breadth of definition for that. And so I guess we were sort of hoping that we get some feedback about what the community wants in that regard. Next up is sort of enforcement policy and enforcement and sort of consequences kind of hand in hand. Number one, you know, what do we feel like is the best way to enforce that? Who are we putting in charge of that? Who's going to be the ones that are, you know, I think like most policies in the school, it's going to be a mix of administration and faculty and staff that do that. But, you know, sort of hopefully looking for some guidance on that. And then what do we, what do we think are the appropriate responses? What do we want the response to these violations to be, right? In terms of how serious are we, are we going to treat these? What are we going to do in terms of, when a kid is found in violation of the policy, what do we do with, with the electronic device? Are we going to take it? Are we not going to take it? Things like that. And I think there's a number of sort of issues that come up with all of these things. And so we're hopeful that we want to put it to the community to solicit feedback about what, what, you know, the stakeholders feel is appropriate under the circumstances. And given the latitude that, or sort of, I guess we'll call it latitude, but I think it's just they were pretty vague about the, for statute that we do have some latitude to craft a policy and what we think is going to be best for our schools. So, I guess unless anyone else on the board had comments that they wanted to preface, and we'll go back to the community for anyone that had any input on any of those issues or any other issue that you see that may be coming up with the, that may, that may come up with regards to these policies. I don't want to limit it to those three issues. Those were just the three that we identified. Absolutely. If you could just come up to the, to the stand and introduce yourself.
My name's Tammy Tanet Dutilly. I have a few issues I want to talk on. Number one, we have a wonderful officer that works in the schools, but she's only one person. And when I left the house, I'm a little, they were just talking about a shooting in Leach, they were just talking about some of those policies for safety in a disaster situation. I get emotional, Tammy, if you bear here with us. As I love my daughter dearly, but I just diagnosed with three spells to my heart and my work. So my daughter's going to be 18 in a day. If there's ever a disaster in the school and she didn't have her cell phone, but had the opportunity, had she had her cell phone, call us and mom, this is happening. I love you. Who is the board or the school or any cop to say, you can't hear your daughter's voice for the last time? That is very dear to my heart. She'll be 18, but very first. She isn't an adult. I personally, you know, that each individual teacher should decide, my daughter just got on the National Honor Society. That is something to be very proud of. So I'm sure she probably does snitch her phone once in a while in classrooms, depending on the classroom. But I think it should be up to the teacher to decide. Is it worth taking a phone away? Is she paying attention or are they paying attention in classroom? Are they disrupting the class? And if the teacher feels it's a disruption, the teacher takes up during that class period. My daughter, every single year, has not had this study hall. It's mad, they're much, they give you grades at the beginning and has took that seriously. She's taken every single class she possibly can every single year of high school. She needs to study all. She comes home this sometimes it's midnight before she goes to bed because she cares about the breaks. But she doesn't want to give up and then of course she loves it. That's her break. I honor that. That's her self choice. As a parent, not knowing if I'm here today, gone tomorrow. I want that communication. If I call school, kids are a wonderful sector. If she can't be there all the time, she has parents like me that need her all day long. I mean this, I mean this, I mean that. She might be running through the school to do this stuff. She, again, is only one person in this whole high school taken care of. To call 911 in an emergency situation, it's the same thing as the school. You've got to go through it. If you're calling the middle school, you're calling the elementary school, press this, prompt that. That takes time. If an emergency situation, I don't care what the policies are, if I need my daughter home and a kid home, I need to write a bike. Her dad's working in Danville, Vermont. He can't get here. The police are across the street. That's great. But if they're out on calls, they can't get to. If she needs to save me, if something happened, I want her to save me. If she chooses to not do, that's her choice. But as a mom, dearly loves her child, who didn't have her child, the day after she turned 26, when she graduated, I was 63. I want to spend every moment with my child and I want to be able to have contact in the worst of the situation. So I really, really hope you guys take that into play and let it be the teacher's individual decision. If the student is worthy of having their phone on them and if they're moving off, I am going to take it. Give it back to them at the end of the day. They go to the bathroom, they need a break, they just want to steal off. Let them do that. Lunchroom, they want to have their phone, let them. But to deprive any parent, not just me, any parent of that right to hear their child's voice the last time, if it happens, I don't think you guys really have the right to do that in the future. Anybody can try and exercise anything. But I myself would never, never give the system or deprive the parent of my daughter's notes of a shoot where they want to get shot, or stabbed. That is my opinion. So that is my feeling on that. The next thing is, if I read it correctly, like I say, I'm a bad emotions right now. If I read it correctly, students are not supposed to videotape, take pictures in classrooms or of other students or whatever. But they can do it whether going on the bus, soccer games, baseball games, and they all get, but on Facebook like I do. If we don't, I'll individually get the permission and the person. But there was an incident last year, this teacher's no longer here, though I bonded with him a lot from a lot. He said some things that were kind of cruel to the students and I thought, my lord, a teacher who's supposed to be representing just good character for lack of a breakdown. It's kind of bullying and belittling the students. That's not cool. I said to my daughter, I said, did you say anything about it? She said, no, it happens all the time. So teachers can videotape, teachers can audiotape. Teachers can do whatever they want because they are teachers. They have that freedom to protect themselves or protecting our students. So if the teachers can do it, the principals can do it, the school can monitor it. We get the cameras out in the parking lot, which I thank for my great nephew that I raised. My son was in kindergarten, bought home, he's low school even. Got out that day. Back then it wasn't acceptable. Now we have cameras. So there's cameras everywhere. So if our students can be camera audiotaped, why aren't our students allowed to see? Why can't they protect themselves? If somebody is bullying, I take this as what the teacher said as bullying, will be literally another student. Kids talk. No bullying. It's school policy. But the teachers, some of the teachers, we're doing it. It's kind of a catch 22 here. And the students are supposed to give up their rights. And the teachers should give up their rights. That is my firm feeling on this. The teachers are protected. The students aren't able to protect themselves or prove to their parents what's going on, should it be needed. Um, I feel very strong about this and I really hope you guys, you know, Elia can put out anything she wants, but I think each individual school should set up what is good for their community. My niece graduated from school that had 1,200 people in the graduation class. I think my daughter has 12, 13 baby students in her class this year. You know, it'll be different, city life versus what's currently available in our town. So I'm not going to hold everybody up, but from a very protective, loving mother who drives her daughter insane and wants, probably wants to be as long as she can. Let's give our students some, some say, let's put some trust and faith into them to do the right thing. And if they're not, let the individual teacher decide should that phone stay with them or not. But I don't know how many of you are around parents. But if you put yourself in my situation, whether it's health issues or not, if that was the last time you heard your child's voice on that phone saying, mom, I love you or dad, I love you. In that perspective, you may be a part of the thought process, and I don't know what your thought process is. I'm just assuming, but everything's full of rules and laws in the world. But with compassion, with the thought of family norms and parental rights and student rights, not just teachers and principals. And I'm not picking on you guys. I'm just saying in general, you know, anybody I've dealt with in this school has always been very respectful to me. And I get on a roll, we get upset and part my mouth. I'll be the first one to admit it, but you're, at least our students super. You know, my daughter thought process now, but different than it was two years ago. But she's an adult, February. She has made her choices for herself. And if not, this time's the question. She's always known that. Our students need to know that, but to ban it's, it's, in my opinion, just something. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. That's my heartfelt thanks. Thank you.
And just for, just a couple of points of clarification. You know, this is, this process is not something that the school board initiated. This is our response to this state statute. I don't know if that was made available. I'm sure it's, but if you'd like a copy of it, we can certainly get you on.
Yeah.
And so to the extent that we have discretion, you know, I, I think the, the, the new law specifically says that as a board, we have to enact a ban on these, of course, the communication devices from bell to bell. So we, as a community, as a school, as the, as the administration, as a board, we have no discretion with regards to certain things. And, and while I agree that's unfortunate, you know, it's not something that we really have any control over, right? I wanted to also note that what was, what was circulated in terms of the policy, proposed policy, that is the New Hampshire School Board Association's sample policy. So as a member of the New Hampshire School Board Association, our board gets every year sent new policies that the School Board Association has devised to keep up with changes in legislation. So we go through our policies, you know, not every year, but we go through our policies periodically. We have to update all the new policies that, that are affected by changes in legislation every year and that those are kind of prioritized. Obviously, this is one of the biggest ones that I think schools are dealing with across the state this year. This is not the policy that we've come up with, such as the policy that the School Board Association is suggesting that the districts adopt. I think in, from, in my view, it represents sort of the most expansive version of the policy of a policy. And so that's, that's not something that we, that we've come up with or we've proposed. Our kind of point here tonight is to get the type of feedback that you've given and we appreciate that so that we can come up with something that makes sense locally. But there is limitations to our discretion in what that policy would be, specifically with respect to the ban. Now, I do take your concerns about one of the, the policies regarding this sort of, and it seems to be stuck onto the, the policy and it doesn't really have much to do with the change in legislation, but the students not being permitted to use electronic devices to afford audio or video. That, that's one of those, I, I, I certainly understand your concerns about that and students being able to use videotaping or videoing of incidences that occur at school to protect themselves and to protect other students that certainly have concerns about restricting that. But in terms of what our discretion is, it is very, under the circumstances. Does anyone else have any comments?
That's a question. Has any possible consequence been thought out? What's going to happen if they do it?
Yeah. So it's in the, in the proposed policy, essentially there is a consequences and violations section. So what the School Board Association essentially has outlined is students are not permitted to use electronic devices, or the consequences for violating the policy will be pursuant to the student code of conduct. First offense would be a warning and confiscation of the device during the school day. A second or subsequent offense would be electronic communication devices will be confiscated. A disciplinary referral would be written. The student's parents are going to must pick up the device from the principal or the superintendent's office. So in terms of consequences, right? You know, we have our normal disciplinary process. If we have kids who are disruptive and they're repeatedly disruptive, there's a, there's a, there's a process that plays out with the administration. And I think most of these things would be dealt with in that same, through that same process. I think that the, the main difference here is what the School Board Association's posed responses is taking the devices away from the students. And then holding them at least till the end of day, or if it's a, if it's a subsequent offense, it could, it would be basically holding the, the device until a parent could come and collect it. Which, you know, depending on the circumstances, could be days, could be a week before a parent has an opportunity during school hours to come in and get this, the student's device. So, you know, that is, I, I will say that I have concerns about the policy that, that has the school taking possession of electronics like that. I think we have, you know, you can take that away, you can take, you take that electronics away from, from kids, you know, anyone that has kids knows that that doesn't always go smoothly. And I don't know that I think it's a good idea that we're going to be putting teachers and administration in the position of taking, taking a kid's phone away. I think, you know, just based on potentially the reaction that that may generate. And also concerns about the school district liability wise, taking into possession potentially thousands of dollars worth of electronic devices. We have a, a cellphone costs $1,100 to stay, right? And if we have a handful of those, how are we going to maintain them in terms of making sure that they don't get lost, damaged, or protect the district against potentially people claiming that their phone was damaged while it was in our possession? So those are, those are concerns that I have. And, and you know, if anyone else has any thoughts on that, I, I frankly, I, I don't know what the right answer is in terms of like how we respond to them. So, Jackie?
Thanks. I'm Jackie Rosen.
No, it's fine. I think we can hear you as long as you speak up.
Okay. I wonder if our district would want to consider those magnetic phone cases that suit instructor influences frequently blocked and door like blocked up so that only the student that grabbed the phone, you know, about, about there are cases that exist.
Yeah.
That, yeah, individuals' actions, so for students to drop their phones that way, the student could have ensured that no one has touched their phone. I personally don't have a problem that the teacher or administration taking away your phone. And it's been made very clear, it should not be out there. And I think if we don't hold fast to that, we're going to be saying that it'll be, I think we've come down hard on that and with no exceptions, it's going to be rough at first. I don't think that's, I think unadaptable. So I don't know if those students can just walk through the door, you know, this is probably things every morning. It's on the couch and I know kids will be anxious throughout their phones. I'm I think it'll be hard at first, but I think I think that places of them really help. Sure. You know, we have to make sure that there's always someone available to give them the phone to use.
Yeah. So I'm familiar. They, there's several companies that manufacture those and have systems for that. They use them for different. I think, I think there is school systems that use them. We use them for concerts and stuff, so people go to the border, but you know, that's a, that's an expense, I guess, that we would have to look into.
You do? Yeah.
Yeah, we did look at, we did. And then and then I guess it would just be a matter of working out the details of, do we, do we take the phone, put it in the bag and then the bag goes with the student or the bag goes somewhere else or it goes in the office or, or what that be? Yes.
I'm Kristen. I'm a parent and teacher. I'm not a personal at this point, but I'm, and I wasn't to speak for here.
Sorry. Do you speak up there? Because it doesn't.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I have a couple of questions and then just to kind of go off of what Jackie has said. Is this going to be, and it needs to be, but I'll ask as, will it be a K-12 thing? Because our youngest still have the watches and still clean because all of a sudden we get winter activity. There are winter jackets. I'm like, how do you know that? Oh, we got a message. So it's not just a middle high school problem. This is down to our youngest learners as well that need to learn that. Just call, we have the phones in the room. We can call, it'll be okay. Um, and to go along with Jackie, and I don't have the right answer because I've been looking at those bags as well. Part of me says it'd be nice to give the kids, you know, and parents, like this is what's going to happen. This is the expectation. You don't get to have the phone. They need to be turned off during the day. And if they keep them in their backpack and they're responsible with it and they do what they need to do and it never comes out of their backpack, I think that's wonderful. I think that's great. For the kids that aren't able to have that responsibility, here's your bag, return the magnetic bag now and take it. But to me, it's, we're always, I feel like punishing a whole, one is not a whole issue. And I know it's a law now, so I totally get that too. But it would be nice if like kind of our, so like if they're able to have it in their bag and not one teacher has ever seen it out and it's not caught on cameras, it's not seen. And maybe kids are going to be good at hiding it. I know that can happen too. I get it. But like backpacks don't go into the bathrooms. They don't get to go in backpack, in, in the bathrooms maybe. And that if they then take, take advantage of it being allowed in their backpacks, then the next step is you burn the bag. And maybe it's for the week and then they can try again, or maybe it's a non-tolerant and you lost it. You already had your warning and now it's done. And this is for the next 880 days. That's all.
So, so I can just quickly respond and then absolutely. I, I have, I have a concern about a policy that is, is discretionary at to, as too much discretion that we're putting, that we're putting in individual teachers, not because I don't think we'd exercise it appropriately, but because I think that that invites conflict between the students and the teachers about, well, you let that person do it and you let, you know, why can't I do this? And why can't I have my phones? Yeah. And I just don't, I don't want to put people in the position, I don't want to put you folks in the position of having to like argue with students about who can and who can't. And, and I think it probably makes sense from, from administrative perspective and like forceful perspective that we have a uniform policy that there's, there's no argument to be had about it. It's, it is what it is and and it, and it applies across the board. And I understand that that, that necessarily means that we're sort of treating kids maybe that don't need to be treated in, in a certain way, as in the same way as we're treating a kid who's more likely to abuse having their phone on them. But I think if we don't do that, then we're creating, we're, we're going to create a, a lot more conflict than the most, the teachers and the students in trying to administer that policy on a daily basis. And, and you know, just opening ourselves up to, to claims that we're just not, everyone's not being treated fairly. Yes.
Dave works for just being represented as a teacher here tonight. Couple of different things. It's unfortunate the state has stripped us of this early. We are a school and we should be able to use these cell phones and teach kids appropriate use of cell phones. So there's, there's the first problem with the state. I believe overstep their boundaries. We're not able to actually do this now. In the demo letter or demo policy that went around, you know, it says that if you're going to need something in school to use, that the school will provide that for you. Many parents, even some here know that my kids use them in like shooting that microscope to send home to parents. You know, different dissections, things. So I use them as a communication device and it really truly enriches students abilities. I have seniors and other kids that have reached out and said, hey, you know, I still have a cat that has such a picture from 10 years ago. You know, so I really think we're going to lose that opportunity. So maybe in the policy, you know, can we have a place where it says, if it's appropriate use in the school classroom, we can actually, you know, use your own phone in that. Instead, you know, the people of the district buying a ton of cameras and having to add those in and doing all that. Third point is as a teacher, and I believe that the district itself too, doesn't want to be responsible for, like you said, a thousand dollar phone in my classroom. You know, now I've got 10 of them from my homeroom class because that's, you know, be the easiest place for people to say, oh, take them away at home room and do that. Well, you know, what happens if I have an emergency and have to leave or different, certain things can occur? I don't want to be responsible for those phones. That's a lot of liability on a teacher as well as the district. So that plan needs to be shifted liabilities to somewhere else.
So let me answer one question and ask you a question.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I don't, you know, with respect to the cell phones, we don't have discretion to allow anything other than, there's very limited the, the health related problems that are needed for health related issues. So kids that have devices that, monitoring diabetes, things like that, or language related assistance for ESOL students. So with respect to the cell phones, I, I think we, we don't have that discretion.
And which is unfortunate is what I was saying, we're losing a point of communication with interclassroom time to parents right away. In, which is unfortunate, is when I was saying, we're losing a point of communication with inter-classroom time to parents right away.
And one of the questions that I, that I have for you, and, and thank you for coming, uh, you were here. Couple weeks ago, presentation with a student who did a pretty extensive technology project. One of my concerns is this, this school association policy definition of, of what is it, uh, personal communication vice is very broad. It would exclude the use of personal computers.
Yep.
Uh, in the classroom, and I wonder, you know, to what extent.
That project would not have existed.
Well, so that was my concern, right? If we're, if, if we're forcing kids to do. Sort of high-level stuff like that on a phone book, because that's all we're providing for them.
No, the, the district provided hand of the laptop.
Okay, so we, so we do have.
Separate internet and separate phone, so it can interfere with.
But then we're singling out those students again.
For that project, um, and so that's part of the reason why we have the STEM lab that we're building, is to have a separate internet, so there can be. Those individuals. No, at the high school.
Okay, so. To these, so is it, you think that if the issue is, we have students that wanna do sort of more in-depth. Maybe technology projects or any other projects, maybe it's an art or, or, you know, some sort of additional learning opportunity. That would be better served really with not necessarily what we're typically given the students for technology. Um, we have the technology to.
Trey, Trey is able to find some.
Yeah, we, we can find some work around it, like we did for that student, um, where we set up a separate internet, and then we, uh, gave a. Computer that listens through all of our, um, security things, so they can, uh, use some of the AI tools needed. To program with, so, and I think that's some of the stuff that Mr. Webster and I talked with, are speaking about that, when he has a student who has that. Let's plan upfront, what the budget is, what does he need, so that way when he runs into those, it's not like a delay in any sort. Uh, so trying to anticipate that, and I spoke to Mr. Alfred about that too. Kind of all on board, trying to, um, sometimes it's really only one or two kids, and we should be able to do those workarounds.
Thank you.
Dory Weeden, um, Spanish teacher and Busal, senior class advisor. As my husband uses, he's really hot, she's like standing up there. So first, um. It's a process for sure. Um, the first thing that comes to my mind is, is kids, this is an addiction to, this is like, it's a. So I think what we really need to take a step back, is just, this is going to be a shock, it's already a shock to them. It's a shock to us too, I mean, I already got rid of my Apple Watch, because I'm like, how am I gonna move this? So we need to educate them, we need to educate them, um, why are we saying you shouldn't have air pods in? It's not really good for the ear, the ear fog, so, so as teachers, let's start to educate our kids on why this is important. This isn't just for punishing you, so let's not slap them on the hands and give them, give them suspension because you did this. Let's start being educators and educating the kids, that's my first thought. Um, because there is a reason why the data shows why this is important, right, so let's look at that data first, start educating our kids and the teachers on this. The second thing is, we're not all moving, I'm not a new, I may have created a lot of these wrong. But it's a problem, I've been here twenty-five years. Cellphones are a problem, I police it every single day of my job, it is a pain in the butt. You have no idea how much pain and butt it is, so I'm really like excited about it, because I finally can stop facing it. But I'm also like, it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be really hard, so let's try to figure out how we can work together. To try to make it what's best for the kids, but if we're not all gonna be on the same page on this, it's never gonna work. So we all have to come up with concrete plans of how this is really gonna work, and what's gonna best support the kids with the education. The third thing that I wanna bring up is, um. Timmy did talk about the safety pain, I just wanna bring that up, and maybe someone else can bring this to attention, but as employees, we have the safety plan. So I think that's really important, so, so. School employees have phones, not our phones, none of us, we're supposed to talk about this, but we have a very good safety plan, at least. So, yeah, we have an S R L, so we have a fantastic safety plan, so I have my own time in school, so anything were happened, I am one hundred percent. Very positive that my kid is gonna be safe, um, and I think that's really important that parents know that. I get it, I, I'm not gonna shoot, I don't know that, but I think it's important that parents know, just because we're removing that child's cellphone, doesn't mean they're not safe. So I think that's really important to know as well. Um, something I said, oh, the, just to also bring this up, it's belted about. So that doesn't mean that, you know, when they leave the school. And they go to soccer practice, they can use their phone, practice of school activities, school functions. Like the class, senior class trip, they're allowed to use their phones, perhaps just belted about.
I think that's what the policy is, get field trips and stuff.
Yeah, soccer games, things like that, so like, that's everything too, is I think. In some of the conversations I have with K members, they're like, oh, we, you know, it's this, it's just the seven forty-five to two thirty, it's just educational part, it's not. All things, it's not home, I mean, it's not, so it's not stripping you with everything, you know, lingual, it's just that belt about learning. Which is just the academic piece, um, so those are just some of the key points I wanted to bring up, but again. We have to educate the kids on the importance of this, and not make it a negative thing, make it positive, and teach them the importance of it. Thank you. That's awesome.
Yes.
Do, can they have, can the kids bring their phone? To school and leave it either locked in their backpack or in their locker? Is that still okay?
Yes.
They just can't, like, go, they can't be on their phone during lunch or in class or.
Correct.
Okay, I just, that's, just, I'm just trying to figure that.
Alright, sorry, we didn't hear you, Matt, can you be louder?
Yeah, pop.
Sorry.
I feel like I have to sing a song and play a trumpet or something.
We actually would appreciate that.
For part of what, part of what you're deciding is how it's gonna be implemented, correct, they're taking the same point, so whether, we don't know yet whether they can have it in their backpack during class or not.
Correct, so to be clear, I, I guess what I was responding to was, in terms of what the law. What the, what the new statute is, is banning. Is just use of it during instructional time, it doesn't say anything about where it has to be stored or anything like that, there is a, a draft policy.
Sure.
From the school board association that talks about that, um, that, that it can come to school basically, but it has to be locked away or kept, you know, kept away. And, and no use, right, but.
Turned off in the backpack or the locker.
But you, but that's correct, like, what, you know, the way that our school interprets or implements is what we're here.
Okay, uh, let's see, I'm here, I'm gonna share, share a couple of things, or thoughts anyway. Um, I think, I think I'm going into my fourth year, maybe like there, I'm not sure, but. The first year that I was here, the first two years that I was here, it was teacher discretion outside of that's what we used. That didn't work out very well because of the conflict that, you know, Jay, everybody was kind of fighting, I can do a year, why can't I spend the first seven, eight minutes of class? Arguing about why we can't use our cellphones. Last year we went to, cellphones need to be in the bags, gotta be away. What, what that turned into was teacher's discretion again, so tons of bathroom breaks. Cause they, they're leaving them on, they're buzzing, they can't ignore the buzz, it's, it's a distraction, um, so. To do something uniform, I think, is whatever it is that you desire, and it's not gonna be any perfect answer, because you're gonna upset some people, you know, it's like, we have laws, right? Most people don't need them, some people do, but we have. And, um, I would, I would, from my experience, there has been very little positive value to having cellphones in school. I think they cause a lot of conflict amongst students that we end up putting a lot of resources in and time into. It's, it's obviously the data will show you that it's a distraction to education, I mean, any, any data that you pull up now is gonna show you that. Test scores go up without cellphones in the classroom, um, you know, again, the amount of confidence with students that are trying to solve without. And as far as the safety piece, and I'm sensitive to this, and I'm a former Lingwood parent, I guess, um. But as Dorian said, we, we practice drills, we have one-touch access to our police departments to notify them if there's an emergency. And I feel like if we did have a true emergency, and every kid had their cellphone. We would not be able to put the plan in place, because we wouldn't be to, we'd be trying to combat phones to parent, home calls to parents. House coming in to kids, so we wouldn't be able to coordinate what we practiced, and I think it would actually make the situation unsafe. But, that's.
Thank you.
Bring it on us, Jackie.
You gotta come up with something, you're gonna trouble for, you know.
Um, so I'm a teacher in the middle, and, and then, so this is, I guess, a memory, it's an idea of just. Phone being put in backpacks. We've been so lucky in the middle school, because grade six and seven. I really, they pretty much complied, I was on staying in their backpack. I will tell you during my prep period, when it's quiet in my room, I hear those phones buzzing all day long, and all period long. Those kids are getting texts, and those kids are getting phone calls, which just blows my mind, very small, it's texting them all, yeah. But, the compliance is pretty good, grade eight is also pretty good, but definitely get them like sneaky. Starting to sneak at the end of the day, because high school, I can't, I'm not targeting any specific teachers, I have no idea, but I know high school kids.
Can I interrupt you? Do you think it's because it's? Couple years ago, they were allowed to have them, and then it was discretionary, and then it was no cellphones, and the eighth graders are still the ones that. Okay, okay.
I, this is my, I've only taught here for four years, so.
Okay.
And as long as I've been here, like, the other middle school teachers have said, we're, the best thing I've seen in middle school, it's never a problem.
Okay.
And, because I, I used it at high school, it was actually so, it was such a relief to. To have it not be a problem anymore, I don't know, said before, but it, it was a constant problem as a high school teacher. A lot of time would get wasted in class, I was the, you know, excellent teacher, if I was coming down hard, because this teacher let their kids have them, and. And I do know that there is appropriate and beneficial use, but unfortunately, I don't, I think all the. All the data shows that the negative drawbacks outweigh any benefit, so. Anyway, I know it's a law. It's unfortunate that we can't give kids like, like when I first got to high school, they, like, high school seniors got to have a smoking break. Like, kids get smoked, you know, when I was a freshman, I never. That's a good, but the seniors, I was somebody who had like a smoking break, and it's unfortunate we can't give them like. Cellphone breaks, like, to get their anxiety out, look at their screen, I don't know how we do that, but this is how I can do that. So I guess what I wanted to say is, I love the idea that we just rely on these kids, them in their backpacks, them in the locker. And maybe it could work, um. That it works for grade six and seven and pretty much grading. But I don't, don't.
And, and leave it up to the teachers and police at classrooms as far as.
No, please don't leave that up to the teachers and police at classrooms. No.
I mean, to the extent that.
Yeah.
To the extent, to the extent that the teachers are responsible for policing general conduct, I mean, I think that's.
Oh, yeah, I mean, obviously, if the one happened to be in the room, I'd call it out, but.
But not, not in a way that you're exercising discretion and, and being hounded by students as to why somebody is, you know, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but. I mean, I, I think unfortunately, the reality is, just like, you know, crossing the hallway, the staff is. You know, part of that enforcement of the.
Oh, yeah, no, I would like walk by someone that wasn't mine if I saw them with their phone out or something.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna be that, where like some teachers didn't say this is okay and others.
Well, they can't, at this point, that, that's not an option anymore.
So I think the hardest thing I've seen here is how do we actually implement this, where do the phones go during?
Well, I have a question for you on that, do, do you feel like? Because you said you can sort of hear the phone buzzing backpacks, you feel like that, just the, that even that is too much of a distraction, should we be looking at?
No.
At, at having them not just in backpacks, but also, you know, not in the classroom at all, is that? Or do you think that it's sufficient to say, you know, don't take it out?
In the middle school backpacks go in the lockers, they're not allowed in the classrooms, you just don't have enough rooms if I'm tripping open them all the time. And so the kids aren't hearing them buzz, because they're in their classes.
Oh, I see.
I only hear them buzzing, because they're metal lockers, and it's quiet in my room, because I have no other room, and I'm just always struck by that.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
That makes sense, Matt, did you have some mad on that?
High school kids don't use the locks, so. I, I'm only of condition is they shouldn't be allowed in the classroom, I, if it were me.
You say, sorry.
They should not be in the classroom, if it were me, I wouldn't dip my toes in this thing, because it's gonna be difficult for the. This year's sophomores, juniors and seniors, because they've had cellphones, the middle school kids haven't used them at all, right, so it's gonna be a year of discomfort. But I would, I would take it out of everybody's hands, and I would get lockers or bags that they're tournamenting, when they come into school, maybe those lockers, like, if they go go-karting or something. The locker they're holding up, that's something, our hands don't have to touch them, um, and then it eliminates everything, you know. I, I don't know how we do it, we, we left them in backpacks last year with the policy. Doesn't, doesn't have this law, if we leave them, if we allow them in the backpacks, nothing's gonna change, it's not gonna change, I can guarantee it. Because we started last year, and, and, you know, people, everybody seemed to be on the same, growing in the same direction with it, and slowly. It's phones in the hallways, phones in the classroom, one by classroom, phones up against the computer screens. Kids, kids with earbuds hiding behind their hair, it's all, it's all those things, I think, I think if we're gonna do it. Just do it, just do it. You know, and then we can ease back if we feel like we need to, but I think when you, when you try to. Just keep, you know, a slow water drip to try to get this thing under control, it's not, it's not gonna work, I think it's the opposite. And then if we can pull back, then we can pull, but that's, you know, there's too many people have too many different opinions, that no matter what. We say, they're gonna do it the way they wanna do it in their space, you know, it's just, it's just the way it is.
So in terms of, in terms of saying, like, the policy says that they, they're not even allowed in the classroom, that if you're gonna bring it to school, it has to stay in the locker.
If you could get high school kids to use the locker.
I mean, they need a place to put their phone, maybe they're.
They're bringing their phone, and they're gonna need the locker.
Yeah.
But, so you're of the opinion that backpacks is.
I say we create a system where they're turning their phones in, just, when they get them before they leave, and that means that we have to extend homeroom five minutes. Or have a five or ten-minute block at the end of the day that we peel off, so that the kids, we can make an organized system, where kids come in, they drop off, they get their things back. And that's what we're doing, and I think what you'll see is, I think, just having your kids in the school building, I think you'll see more productive kids in the school building, I think you'll see better test scores. I think you'll see kids who are communicating more effectively with their peers and their adults. Uh, because right now, whenever they get to use them, it's like sitting in a room with zombies, just like we see in our homes sometimes. They do, their heads are down and they're in their phone, and it's, and it's really, they're getting robbed of the child, they really are, they're in a lot of the high schools, it's great, from what I, what I've watched. And, and, and you're gonna see, everything that you see come of this, other than the heartburn, and the angst, and the parents, and the kids getting used to, everything you're gonna see upfront. That's painful will subside, and you'll see happens, I think, and more positive, but I can't, I can't promise. It's just, it's just life.
Sounds like a promise.
Matt's promised.
Mr. Nelson?
Change is not easy, and anytime that we're facing change, uh, there's always, uh. A number of people that don't agree with it, we have an opportunity now that we have the law backing something that we probably tried to deal with for the past ten years. Would have ever thought, and looking back to my career, would have ever thought that smoking would not be occurring in school, that people don't. People don't have cigarettes in their pockets, they don't have cigarettes in their backpack for the most part, it's never, it hasn't been an issue for quite some time. And back a number of years ago, that was something you never, ever thought would go away, would disappear. Um, so we have an opportunity to teach kids that you need to obey the law, right? There, these kids that are probably in the prime of, of dealing with their phones, you know, they are also dealing with things in their lives in regards to the law. And, and we have the backing of the law, you know, when you try to make change and you don't have the backing we have right now. You're gonna get a lot of, a lot of feedback, it's not always that positive, but. I, I, I strongly believe you got, you got a small window of time to create change. Within that first month of school this year, if everybody's consistent with it, and everybody's following the rules. It's gonna be an issue in the middle of the year, that's probably not even gonna be that big of a deal.
Thank you.
And, sorry.
I just had a quick question about.
You say your name for the record?
Yes, Alan Gilmore.
Yes, Alan Gillem and Dotters.
Thanks.
Second here. Um, this is maybe for some teachers as well. Uh, the enforcement, it sounds like there's some concerns about the. This, obviously the, the phones being in the backpacks. And if we, if we were to put those all in a, some safe box or whatever in the classroom or in the school. I would assume that a lot of kids will just say, I don't have my phone today and it's gonna be in their bag. So how would that be police? Would, again, look through backpacks? How would we decide?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's too much. We, we, we have to come up with something that, that works, but we can't have administration searching every backpack as ever.
Right, right. Or if you hear it going off in class, if they're going off in class, do you stop the class and check the running backpack to see who has it? I don't, that's probably not reasonable. So.
We're a small school that that can be addressed fairly easily in most cases.
Yeah. And if it, is it, can you go through a student's backpack if they said they don't want it? You can go through their backpack?
Maybe you can send little Johnny and his backpack to the office and let.
Okay.
Mr. Stavali deal with it.
Right.
You know, and you do that once or twice and then Mr. Stavali's at the door when they come in and go, okay, little Johnny.
Yeah.
Three times now, you've got to come down with your backpack. Let's just put it in now. Maybe there is, unfortunately. Fortunately, we are a small school that something like that could be fairly easily addressed in my opinion.
So, the, would it be, I know we're deciding with policy, but. Could it be, where it said you wanted a approach for, a consistent approach for everything, not that it's. You can show preferability. So if they were, if it was decided they could have them in the, in the backpack. Could it be the next level if they're not off is that they go in the locked box rather than having them all go in the locked box from the beginning? Because I feel like kids will just keep them in the back. They'll just say they don't have it at school. So. That's it. I'm just wondering if there is, if a tiered approach, I understand that you don't wanna have any preferability. Or, and students, teachers making decisions, but. I feel like a tiered approach might have to be the way that it is anyways, because kids will have it in the backpack. Even if it's the policy for the box.
So you're thinking of, you know, not initially saying. Everybody's phones go into a case or into a box at the beginning of the day, but if you've demonstrated that you can't be responsible with your phone, then. Then, then that's the first step in.
Correct. Yes. And I, and I don't know if that's the right page, but I feel like that would have to be something that is. One offense and it goes in the bottom, in the box, because it has to be. You can't be fighting with it all the time. So if that was it, I just didn't know if that was possible.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you don't have to go.
Can you guys, I know, but every time we turn our backs, I can't hear anybody. Can you guys hear me doing that? So. I'm an older parent of a younger kid and, and there's the whole thing about. I don't know what's happening with society, but like, there are no more consequences for anything anymore. And this, I agree with Mr. Nelson, is a huge opportunity. It's real simple. There is a ban not to use their phones in school. So as a school board or administration, why can't? I mean, to me, it's. If you bring your phone to school, i- in there, you have, don't, like, don't even stipulate, like, there's no phone use at school. So if they use their phones at school, then there just needs to be a, a, a consequence, like. Like detention. I mean, I don't know, do we even have detention? We do have detention? Alright. So, like, I just don't under, like, why don't? I just feel like it's a waste of time and money to like go out and buy like special boxes to lock everybody's phones in. And then next thing you know, we'll have metal detectors at the door and, I mean, it just. I, I just don't understand like why they, we have to make all these special little nuances for, well, if this one does it this way. Or they do, like, if there's no phones used to be used in school, it's that simple, right? So if their phones, either in their backpack, you can hear the phone, like have a consequence, detention. Eventually, these kids are gonna get it and they're not gonna, they're not gonna use their phones. But it's like, it's the same thing with any other law. You don't get it passed if you drink and drive, right? If you drink and drive, and it's your first offense, they don't give you a slap on the hand. There's consequences to it. You lose your license. So it's like, I mean, I get, maybe that's a little dramatic, but do you know what I'm saying? Just, that was the only thing that came into my head.
He gets it. Get the phone. Yeah, yeah.
I, but the, I don't, to me, it's black and white. I don't think, they haven't, the state hasn't really left any gray there.
No, in terms of what is banned, you're correct, the state, there's no. Right. But what's?
And detention is not, they just poke ties behind. Then, if, if they, if, if they, give them detention and they do it again, suspend them all of a sudden. Look, nobody gets suspended anymore. When I was in high school, I spent half high school in in-school suspension. They told jokes. Yeah. So junior and senior year, I stopped doing that crap. You know what I mean? Because I got tired of looking at a cement wall for eight hours. Like, there, eventually kids will learn for consequences. But if we just keep saying, oh, that's okay, or, you know, don't do that again, like, we're never gonna get it. I, I don't know. That's just how I think.
Keep it simple. Let the children bring the phones and the bags, keep them off. One consequence, have them taken away. Second, have the parents pick up the phone. I think we should educate the parents as well, to not shoot first. Keep it simple.
I started where you guys, where you guys are. I just wanted to know that. I, I think the tiered system and the consequence system is a great system. I'm not worried about the kids part of that. I'm worried about all of the different adults in the building. Some of them don't, but there's no consequence if you phone buzzes or if you got. And it doesn't get reported. I think, I think it's more of the uniform within the teachers and what they're responsible for and, and what we. Because there's gonna, there's gonna be adults in this building that have been. Disregard any of these tiers that we put in place or any of these consequences. Or, hey, I'm gonna send Billy to the office because his phone buzzed. There's a lot of teachers in this building that aren't sending Billy to the office. They'll say, don't let it happen again. And then it's gonna happen again. And then I'll go, and then we're gonna see Billy in the, in the hallway and then somebody else is another adult that's a. But rule enforcer, it's the bad guy because they're gonna say, why are you on your cell phone? You know, it's, it's more of. It's more of the implementation in from the top down that I'm worried about, other than having consequences for the kids.
Good point.
Yeah, so.
That's a valid point. That's kind of first.
Yeah.
We tried to be on the same team this past year, just so you know, as, as a staff.
You're right. If you think back, like when I was in high school, we had teachers, we knew we could get away with stuff with it, so we couldn't.
Yeah.
You're right.
At least that has this special, they have a learning and emotional.
Okay, I'm Heather Krill, a little more close up, I'm a teacher. Um, we did, we were all on the same page last year. I would say solidly until like January. Kids were coming in, they were sticking their phones in the pockets. All of them were there and then like May came and there was one phone. In the pocket. Um, I will say ninth graders were better than the upperclassmen, but I think that's coming from the middle school model. Where they weren't used to it and they, they really did. Most of them did not wanna break the rules. Um, however, we have, and I'm a parent and I know how hard it is. To take away my kid's cellular device, but I do it and my life is miserable for the days or. Hours, but I do it because that's what they care about. Me taking like TV from them, they don't care. Me taking like time outside, you know, they want their phone. So the problem is, it makes for a huge management issue. For our, if I went to Mr. Stavali, every time. Certain junior in the hallway last year was on his phone, it, it was, it was frequent. And I would have to send that student to Mr. Stavali and then Mr. Stavali. If I were Mr. Stavali, which I'm not and I never want to be in that role, I wish I could tell that parent. That that child has lost their cellular device at home for one week or two weeks. But that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Because parents. We're here tonight, we're trying, but they don't want to do that because it causes conflict with their kids. So instead, we have to take that back because that is what they care about. So I love, I love what Jen women said, you know, they lose it a couple of times, or they're in in-school suspension staring at the wall. They're gonna know not to go on their phone. I wanna believe that. I wanna believe that, but it's the enforcement of it individually. There were, you know, Katie parents, uh, you know, Mr. Robertson, myself, this, huh, we all told the same kid. To get off his phone. Six times in a two hour period and I don't even have that kid in class, which means I can't actually write him up in alma. Because he's not my student. So then it was like, hey, Mr. Stavali, you gotta pull so and so because it's on his phone. I don't have the time in my day to go to the office and have that, me either to speak. But it is, it has gotten worse and I don't know if we can do it for a whole year because of that breakdown in how. Separate teachers then, let's face it, kids with phones, some of them have. What they, they're teenagers. They have emergencies, but what? One young man in the 10th grade deems as an emergency, we might not deem that as an emergency. So, you know, can I please call my mom because I don't have my uniform? You know, there was a time where we would just. Send them to the office and use them. But yeah, I'm guilty of that. Yeah, you need your uniform for your game, you know. Come back at lunchtime, you can call, you know, call your mom. I did, because that seemed reasonable, but there's all these different reasonable things that we wanna do for our kids, but in the end. It, it broke down, the phones going in the little pockets. So I don't wanna ma, I don't wanna manage that anymore. I, I wanna believe that all kids are gonna follow the rules, but. They stopped following them. And honestly, they're not really exhausting. By May, I was like, it's a free for all with the phones and I'm tired of trying to do.
Feel about, what are your feelings with them keeping them in the backpack? Off in the, in the.
I think if we let kids keep it in the backpack and one kid takes there, we might as well send them to the police department for the day. I don't really mean that, but that's like feeling like, holy crap, there is a real.
Consequences.
Serious consequence. But last year, we, we did, we tried talking to them. I think what Dory said about the educational piece, they are distracted.
That's true.
You know, um, I think that's a huge piece. I, I think it's worse as they get older. You know, because there's that clutch, you know, of having to just rely on it when they're like, so, you know, kids can be socially awkward. What do they do now versus like actually having a conversation? They're like, oh, I feel awkward. I just call my phone. No, no, face the awkwardness, man. Um, and, and they'll do that more if they don't have their phones for a while. So I, I'm kind of in that about. It's hard. It's a, it's a consequence needs to be serious if kids are gonna really, really like, oh, I'm not taking my phone out of my bag. I don't know what kind of consequence that should, I really. I don't know, but that's just, those are my thoughts.
So, um. You know. In an ideal world, we could, we could come up with a consequence that deters kids making bad decisions. I don't think such a consequence exists generally in the world. Uh, I think if we told them that they were gonna get the death penalty, that kids, you know, you know how it works. So I think, you know, it sounds like you would be in favor of, of something that, like Matt said. That they just don't have access to it. Like, we're not, we're not even allowing them to have them in a backpack. Not, no opportunity to make that decision would be better than. It would be better than having, you know, sort of trying, us trying to come up with something that's gonna deter this conduct, which I think. I mean, I think we get into, into a debate about whether or not, you know. There's a better educational benefit to having a kid miss a day of school because he looked at his phone, right? And we're talking about like, what's, should we, are we doing better to have that kid in class? Are we doing better to punish this kid by suspending them for a day if they're looking at their phone? You know, the, could the customers get, get to the point where they are, are kind of outsized for the conduct? Where it's not a danger, they're not, they're not, you know, it's not violent. It's not something that's like, you're causing a, a serious disruption in the school. It's something that we need to address, but I, I'm just concerned that there's, that we don't have effective consequences. That's going to deter the kids from doing it. Um, and I think that's, that's, that, that's share. Uh, that concern is shared by, by some folks, but maybe the, maybe the resolution is. We just, they just don't get that opportunity. We don't, they're not allowed to have them on their, you know, in their backpack at all and that's how.
Yeah, that you think like what Alan mentioned about like, kids, I don't have, I didn't bring my phone today.
Yeah.
Now, and they're, you're gonna be like, oh, okay.
And this is the tricky part, right? There's always gonna be kids in the district that don't follow. That's the nature of kids.
Right, but they're all.
You know, my, my concern is we're, we're always gonna have kids that don't follow them, right? The issue that we have with the cell phones is, you know, say for example, smoking or vaping in, in school, right? There's, there's a, there's gonna be a few kids that, that are going to engage in that type of behavior. And so we have rules, we have punishments inside. With the phones, the phone use is so ubiquitous that it's not just. Warrant to kids that are inclined to engage in that behavior. It's the higher school body that's inclined to engage in using the phone. And then using the phone in the program, right? So it's, it's a bit of a different scenario. I, I think we, we, we have to have something that, that is meaningful enforcement. I just, I, I am, I have a concern that if we craft a punishment scheme that is. Such that it's effective at getting all these kids to say, no, I'm not gonna do that. That it's, that it's going to be outsized and it's gonna, and, and we're, we're gonna lose some educational benefit to it in, in terms of. Students are gonna be suspended, we're gonna, they're gonna lose instruction time over this, but it's not really that bigger, you know. I said, not that, that big of a deal. It's not, it's not a security or safety issue that we really, that we really take seriously.
And going off of that, it's when you have the kids in detention and in in-school suspension. It's, except for Jen, it's normally the kids that don't have a good support system at home. That don't have parents that follow up, that don't have parents that, um, give consequences. And, and those are the kids that need to be in class the most, not in detention, not in in-school suspension. Not always, there are exceptions to the rule, but for the most part, that's usually the case. So, you know. Giving them in-school suspension or whatever, or, or expelling them or suspending them or something, we're having a phone is not. What is going to be best for those children, if I said that right.
I'm that.
Good.
Um, I'm very much of the mindset of logical consequences and. Rules are rules. I am very black and white, so sometimes I have a hard time understanding why this is even such one fine grand, like, why is this such a thing? Because I know it is and I understand that. But to me, right? The rule is turn off your cell phone when you get to school, put it in your backpack, you know, and, and again, don't bring it to the bathroom, whatever. You're not pitting people, well, you might be, but when the kid takes it out, it's obvious they have their phone. You, you see it, you hear it, it's there. Here's your bag, you burned the bag for the day. That's the logical consequence. You use it, you lose it. Done. There doesn't need to be any more of that, like. And again, but, and I, and I go back with the idea of the teachers too, with the whole thing. If you're constantly hearing Mrs. Fadden lets me, but Mrs. Fadden let me, go have a conversation with Mrs. Fadden and say, you can't follow these rules. We're gonna have to have another conversation about what that's going to look like for you here, because that doesn't work, right? Like.
Right.
Hold the kids accountable as much as the adults accountable, as much as the families accountable and the teachers. It is, that's really to me where this would work. Like, it's just not. But if you can use it respectfully, because I didn't bring what it's. They're going to lie.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to say they don't have their phones. So that, oh, well, now they took it out, surprise. Well, it's gonna be the same consequence as if. We set it in, okay, now you burned the bag and now you burned the bag for the rest of the day. And now, oh, this is strike two, you burned it for the week. And now, oh, it's strike three, you will, you, every day you come to the office and it goes into the bag or, you know, whatever. It, it just seems to me to be black and white. But the last thing I'd like to say is, I hope so that teachers, staff, students. Parents, everyone is on the same page. Once you all have decided what this policy is, is going to be, and I appreciate the input that you're allowing us to have. That you have another meeting asking or encouraging students, staff, parents to all attend. So that they can hear a very clear message that this is what this is and it's a law now and it's, it's out of our kids. And so I hope that that. Become a bigger, like a.
Now, this, when we develop this policy, we still have to go to frustrating, second reading. So we'll have technically two more school board meetings regarding the policy.
I thought we were phoning on it tonight so we could get the messaging out to the families. Start this.
Okay. We could do that and bring it out.
We had included a, yeah.
A public floor. Listen, I, I, I'm walking out after this like progress, no one here for the attention chair. Yeah, but, but like Alan said, I mean, the kids are gonna find workarounds and these types of things, but honestly, if we all. If we all reflect on our last three hundred and sixty-five days, how many times have you forgot your phone? Somewhere or anywhere moving once. These kids are gonna say they forgot their phones. We just make a forgot their phones. We circulate it so we can, you know, not that we're gonna go out policing the hallways, but. Okay, we know that, you know, Johnny forgot his phone today. We know we didn't, cause nobody forgets their phones. Nobody forgets their phone. And adults don't forget their phone. Kids certainly don't.
Actually, not always. It's, it's actually nice to not have to look at it.
Before you take off, but just, just to clarify. And I don't understand, your position is that we, that we should be. That the kids should be putting their phones into. Lockbox or whatever it is, whatever. As they come in.
Just because, I mean, everybody has balance, but I just think if we're gonna do something. I'd rather go, like, if I focus for, I'm much harder beginning than I ease back. Cause it's easier to start them, right? It's harder to do with the other one. And we've already got the middle school students coming in, their husband pretty much under this. They're just gonna, they're gonna be, they're not gonna feel so impressed to put their phone in the box and have it, have it put away. It's gonna be the kids that have been used to it, the parents that have been used to be another contact the kids all day during school. That's gonna be the hardest part. But I think that's, I think that's the way you do it. I think it makes it easier on anybody, because. No matter what we put in place, there's too many people that again, have their own. And it's gonna make it difficult. We, we tried this year, it was cell phones in the back. I thought, I thought it died a little earlier than that, but I mean, it's just, it just.
So I'm back for the last time, I swear.
We haven't even got to the two other issues.
I know, but here's the problem, the kids are lying and they're not going to not have their phones on them, but they're not going to turn them over to you. So then what is that consequence going to be? So for example, I have kids that are now freshmen, which is crazy. They had an eighth grade championship. My daughter went for the overnights, my son did not. They were told specifically, it wasn't even a school rule, it was the camp's rule, they are not to have their cell phones, they cannot have them on them. So what do I do? I take my child and I told her, you cannot. Now she has separation anxiety, social anxiety, all the anxieties due to my illnesses and almost dying. And has to say goodnight to her mother every single night, right? I said, no, you're gonna survive three nights, it's gonna be okay. She was one of three kids that didn't have their cell phones. Every other child had their cell phones and it was well known and it was okay. Yet my child who has all the anxieties could not have it because the mother followed the rules. She was penalized. I mean, she could have used a kid's phone, but she wouldn't, because she's a rule follower anyway, so she was not going to touch anybody's phone. But, so now what are the consequences for those kids? Right? So you're taking all the phones and you're putting them all in these bags. But fifty percent of them are not going to put them in the bags because they're going to have them and they're going to have all the things. So now you're still pitting teachers or making them in a uncomfortable position. Whereas, and so your rule followers are going to follow the rules, not have their phones. Why not just allow them to have the phones in their bags, then when they don't behave or they misuse it, it gets taken.
They're giving up to speaker.
No, my back's up.
I respect everything that everybody has to hear, uh, say tonight. As a parent that doesn't know what's in play as far as school safety, it's not distributed to the parents. There are other side, now I've heard of it, is the problem to me. So I would like somehow in the school, let's parents know. What your safety policies are in effect, what your drills are and what you do if an emergency situation should really arise. That right there would go by mine to rest a lot. Another thing is. I, under the understanding that seniors don't have senior release anymore, is this true? They, they are gonna.
Not sure it isn't.
Uh, they still gonna be as long as they abide by what they're supposed to do, uh, here at lunchtime.
Yes, for lunch.
Okay, so. My career has been children and kids and everything and I'm gonna fight for the public. I respect what the teacher said and I understand now hearing from them, it, it was a whole different perspective in my mind. But I've always learned of the reward system. With my daycare, I get from three years, it's always rewards. They're not in jail, you know? So. I believe Jay, I heard you say that during academic hours, there should be no cell phones.
That's just what the statute is.
Right, 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 no, I'm not like. But if they have, they have fifteen minutes maybe for lunchtime.
So.
Let them have their phones.
The, the way that the statute reads is. Such policy shall prohibit all personal communication device used by students from when the first bell rings to start instructional time. Until the dismissal bell rings to end the academic school day. Uh, and then with exceptions and with disabilities. So, so with respect to like. Is that the way that I see it, we have no discretion whatsoever in between start of academic day to the end of academic day. To allow any cell phone use or personal electronic communication device use whatsoever.
Whether we want to or not.
No, I, I'm, I'm just asking, like I say, I'm not targeting anybody. So. And my daughter goes lots of them have Facebook till she was seventeen. She's like, mom, everybody's logging up this school, we finally left them Facebook. So I'm sorry, yeah, for trying to parent. So I am one of those parents that does take a cell phone away. Um, that thing was stopped at her first, I'm sure, but. I am a very strict parent and I understand about cell phones overtaking lives. I had to be at the hospital yesterday, so I stopped up here in a park right next to the hospital. And it was sad how many parents are watching their children, because they were playing on a cell phone. This one little girl with a cheeky little was just walking around looking back at her mom. That crushed me. So I only get cell phones overtaking. I understand that, but it's almost like our, our. Students. Are being punished for being human, doing what adults do. So I'm gonna try to implement with my daughter, your cell phone stays in the car. At lunchtime, if you wanna go to your car and you have your cell phone, go for it. Uh, you wanna go off lunch break, she won't give senior release because every course tonight, I know what it was. For every class, it's gonna be taken. But. It, it's just a huge function to the kids, you know, it's, it's like a slap in the face. You know, I understand the teacher part, I'm not saying that at all. You know, I don't wanna put it into a perspective that. I solve as a parent needs here. But I hope the teachers abide by that too and they don't have their cell phones out. I really hope that takes place. I've even seen that on his, back to his school, so, you know. I really appreciate this meeting, if some light on subject to me. And, uh. Student member actually to embrace. They need to be realized that they're maturing. They know the difference between wrong and wrong, wrong and right, and they choose to be wrong, consequences, if they choose to be right. They should be penalized. So I, I don't know how to tell you the answer, because detention's homework. You miss the classroom time, your grades go down. You know? I, I don't think they're basically clear, and I don't think you're ever gonna find a clarion to. Rule the cell phone situation. I know my daughter, as a teacher, she absolutely loves sharing her home life with. Whether it be animals or projects she's working on or baking, whatever it is. And my mom died, my dad died, my family's all away. That's her extended family. If she wants to share her life with people that show interest in her. That care about her, there's a lot of kids out there in this school system. It crushes me because their parents have them with a dollar sign on the tax return, or the food stamps, or. And it's a true situation, it's a true scenario. So if student has a problem with a teacher or principal. Who's just breaking some of this sharing. If on their trust. And sadly, I started my daycare, parents aren't like. My parents were, when I was growing up, my parents were always with me. We don't see that for the students and thank God for sports because the sports at least. Kids have family, support family, but it's family. So, again, I respect everybody, everybody's opinion. I don't have to agree, but I respect and listening to you, I do agree, but I don't think you're gonna comment. The answer anyway, and locking up the phone, my husband already said, I pay such and such money for that, I'm not gonna have somebody steal that, I'm not gonna have somebody break that. Or if she goes to give her phone and somebody else's phone is broken, I'm not gonna be liable for that phone. I, I've heard this whole scenario at home. So, there's a man who has talks. Thank you.
Thank you.
So. I think we've, we've talked a bit about, we've talked quite a bit about, you know. Implementation and, you know, some consequences and. You know, some of the other topics that we have not sort of gotten to, and I think maybe. Some of the, may have some input on this. Sort of what, what do we, what do we wanna define as a personal communication device? Obviously, cell phones, they're listed, that's, that's a clear cut example. Uh, we have a number of different devices these days, like people have smartwatches, those are capable of communication, but they also do a lot of other things. Um, there's, there's tablets, there's laptops, there's, you know, any number, any range of, of different. Devices that are capable of electronic communication, but the law doesn't necessarily mandate that we ban all those things. And I guess it might be helpful to hear from some of the teachers as to what types of devices are, are problematic. We all know cell phones are problematic. Uh, if we. If we take, if we take cell phones, but we don't take smartwatches, or we, do we think that the smartwatches are just gonna become just as, just as bad? You know, are we? Does anyone have any thoughts on that? I mean, I, I guess people. Yeah, so you know, the idea is. It says that we, you know, the, the definition is a, a personal electronic communication device is. We've left up to the district to decide, so that's sort of what we're looking at, search is. Mr. Weeden.
I didn't, where we, yeah, I'm just, we, we moved on from the last thing.
Yeah, no, if you have something to say about that, feel free.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I think it's gonna be probably a tiered thing. There's gonna be some growing pains. Um, everybody's gonna have to step up the, the teacher's gonna have to start the, the play, do their jobs. Administration will have to step up the play, do their job for the students and the teachers. Uh, and the students got to step up, play, have their own academy. Uh, obviously, you're gonna have to add some rules in place, right? Maybe they all get their phone and stuff. If that doesn't work, then they get taken away, if it seems to get out of control, everybody's phone's going in the box. Begin the day, home run, then the day to go back to the home run, every student together throwing out the box. And then we're moving on to the, I, I think that's. Since the problem is, is there's just too much subjectivity, too much for different interpretation and. Uh, they're all gonna try to break the twist of rules every way they possibly can, so they can have their little personal device on them. Uh, as far as the cell phones are concerned, I think the smartwatches are the rate the same cat. And all the adults that have their smartwatches with their own plans on them. And half of them leave their phones away and they just have their smartwatch, because everything's still there, coming in, it's still a distraction. Whole point of this is, it's not a distraction during school's, school time. So, uh, and then I think, you know, for, for people that do have serious physical or emotional things that they're down with school. And they do need that contact with their parent, maybe their phone, maybe those three or six kids, whatever is in the school system, their phone goes to the office. Okay, it's the, the home run. So if they need to leave, they can get permission from the teacher to go to the office to. Do that, does that emotional medical situation that they have. Uh, but I, I think the majority of the school system's gonna be fine if thrown in the box. Uh, and then I agree, that's gonna be the simplest way to deal with it without having a distraction, without having. Wasting the resources of all the administration to have to lease that, all the resources of teachers, which should be teaching. To have to lose something, it's just gonna be an ongoing like thing that. Like we said, we've never got. But if you give something in the box. You don't have to worry about them making that, so it's there, safe. We don't have to worry about safety issues, because we all have our roles in place. There's an emergency situation, go to the office. We have it all set up to work, and I think that's just simplified. It simplifies it for the teachers, it simplifies it for the students. Simplifies it for the administration. My opinion leaves this approach. Thank you.
The, the AirPods are a, an issue. Because what the students do is they fuck their hair down, you don't see them in there. Um, and what I do as a teacher is I just go like this and then they're like, oh, and then they take them out. The other thing they do is they just put one in and then they fuck their hair down so you don't see them, but they don't hear, they actually don't hear. Be walking down the hallway and I'm like, Wyatt, I am a kid, there's two. And because they don't hear, so what I did is I printed a bunch of literature showing the data to the certification. What why it's important, the volume, the vegetables, everything like that. So as much as I do value kids that show studying, listening to music while studying is important. I think there's gotta be other ways to, to, to look at that. So again, I do see the value of music and studying. But there's gotta be another way, maybe the school can invest sort of headphones. I don't know, so that's like, there's something we can look at. Uh, the smartwatches, I can leave my cell phone at home, I can wear my watch and I can get every single call and text, because of the data from, so. I don't see how that's available. Um, we don't have a lot of kids that wear the big, you know, Bose headphones anymore, everyone wears AirPods. Um, I don't think we probably have a phone student who actually wears those. Um, this school does have headphones, but to be honest, not a single game. No one uses those headphones. As a USL teacher, I have elementary kids that use the tablets. Um, ban the headphones, but I'll be honest, they're not the best headphones, so. It'd be great if we can invest on something that's user friendly for headphones for those kids. But yeah, the AirPods, that helps me, something we need to.
Thank you.
So, um. Yeah, probably we'll see if, when the cell phones are not available to them, you know, we'll probably, we'll see less. So in terms of, um. In terms of other types of devices. You know, whether we want to prohibit personal computers, if a kid has. A, a MacBook that they feel more comfortable using as opposed to what we provide for them. Uh, are we going to, are we going to allow that?
I couldn't, but I don't, you don't allow. We don't allow.
Jen, as of this time, we don't allow you to bring your own personal computer to school. Okay, so.
So we can add that, so we can add that to the list, because we already don't allow. The any electronic device that we use or report to them, we receive information, not use for testing. We don't allow that anyway.
Sorry, I don't know, I, I'm whispering. What, Casey and I were discussing, there's, there's a list here from the Department of Education. That provides for smartphones, cell phones, those are obvious, that's listed in the statute, iPads, tablets, e-readers, Kindles. Laptops, Chromebooks, headphones, headsets, or any earbuds, smartwatches, Fitbits, Samsung or other watch brands. Smart glasses, or any electronic device that can be used for reporting, has been received information, but not used for testing. So those are the, the, um. That's the state Department of Education's policy and restrictions with regards to, uh, use of electronic devices during testing. Uh, by students. So that's sort of an exhaustive list of things. So that's sort of an exhaustive list of things. Some of those things I think are geared more towards making sure that tests are valid and that they're, you know, that the, the kids aren't. You know, properly accessing information what they shouldn't be during the test. But, you know, is that the, is that the full definition of what we're looking for? I, I think this part, this policy is not. Targeting cheating so much as it's targeting, you know. Um, gonna lead the use of the phones in school for. Purposes that have been due to these antisocial, yes. Um, so. You know, is, i- is there any additional feedback on? The, the breadth of the policy, what types of things that we're looking to, you know. Maybe Bluetooth connected devices, smartwatches, cell phones.
Headphone tables.
They have on here e-readers and Kindles, is that an issue that we, that we come across with kids reading on? Electronic books, you know, I mean, I guess that would.
Not really.
I just provided it because this came from the State Department.
That's not.
Classifying as a electronic.
We could add non-school issue, or we could put non-school issue, iPads, tablets, e-readers, Kindles. You know.
Yeah.
Et cetera, so if it's school issue, they could use it, and if you have a kid that's really learning well on a Kindle, let's go. Or whatever.
Provide it, right.
Yeah. If we put non-school provided.
Yeah, we have iPads.
Right, right, but the school provides it, so we would, yeah, add non-school provided items, then. That would cover that. The only thing we haven't addressed is smart glasses. I bet we're getting there. Do you have smart glasses?
Those glasses do make you look smart.
Which knowing some of these ingenious kids, when we take their cell phones and their smartwatches, they're gonna end up with smart glasses. It's fun here.
Did you have a comment?
I think, I would keep it simple and just say, you're banning all non-school issue technology, community devices, and then it covers everything. And then you can, you can also put something in there unless approved by administration, if there's a specialist, but. This school is gonna get a child, anything they need to work with.
Absolutely.
It has always been the culture here, I have, you know, the, the zero concern that a kid wouldn't have the tool that they would need. From, from my perspective.
Agreed.
I mean, we, these kids do not go without.
Agreed. That's all me, just I.
Sandpaws. Thanks, um, okay, so then the last, you know, I, I guess we, we sort of covered. You know, the extent to which we want the policy to apply, we've covered. Uh, to some extent, the enforcement and the consequences of violating the policy. Is there any other issues that anyone wants to raise on any of that or anything else? I think, you know, the plan is. For the board to kind of further discuss it this evening, um, and, you know, hopefully we can come to a consensus on, on. What we want, because we do wanna have the policy sent to the parents before the start of school, which we all know is not far off, so. Uh. Is there any other?
Yes, just now, a question, is this able to be altered throughout the course of the school year, if we put teachers or the function set in stone, is that it for this year?
No, it would set stone, just kidding.
So, so obviously, the stuff that is, uh, is dictated by statute, that's immutable, we don't have any discretion in that, it is what it is. All the other things. You know, if we find that the policy's not working for one reason or another, we can, we can change that, that's, you know, that's part of what we view, we review the policies. And, you know, it's. O- oftentimes, that starts with the, the staff administration coming to us and saying, hey, we have an issue for me. Can we make a change? That's what we did with the middle school, but we usually only back then phones in the middle school, so. You know, we are receptive to that, we, uh, we, we hope that folks feel like they can come to us and. Bring these issues, because we're happy to, to relate this process, so. Anything else? Yeah.
I guess I'm from the oldest school, I'm probably the oldest person in this neighborhood right now. When I was in school, we didn't have computers, we didn't have cell phones, we were there to learn. I realized that this is a different generation. Some people were talking about locking the cell phones in the. Lockbox or in their locker or something like that, I would be against that. For a couple of reasons. One. You have, you have, you have fire drills. What if there's a national fight? And that kid's homeless in the lockups and can't get hold of his parents. God forbid, if there's a shooter in this school. The kid can't call his parents, it might be the last time they can. If that phone is locked up. I don't believe the clock in any corner. The thing that ought to be done is teach the kids responsibility, teach the parents responsibility. I carry mine in the back pack. They ought to be able to do the same. Use it responsibly. When I was in school, we used to be able to bring our guns. Leaving the car during the.
Me too.
During the S's.
They come in from hundreds, put their gun in the locker and go to class.
Years for that to go away. The same with cigarettes, it took a few years to have to go away. You're not gonna do this all the night. Teach the kids responsibility. I don't know that, when they leave that building down there. They're probably gonna go to work in someplace, but they're not allowed to use that cell. I don't learn that. Yes, that's about all I'll ever say, locking them up, I don't vote for that, I mean. They ought to be able to count, call their parents in a real emergency.
Thank you, Jim.
Betsy. You're gonna have, also, so if all kids that don't want to put their phones in the box, it's just, you're just gonna be back the same thing. A lot of the kids will use to put them in the box, the other half are gonna. They're gonna, they're gonna keep your phones on, I mean. So I feel like then you just, you're all rolling circles. Really? But I think that's why I think the mother advice. Talk to you, you need to have a possible. And just to, just to know, when you get in school suspension, I don't know, like I said, I feel like you're a handbook. Probably we have that here. But when you get suspended from school. That makes you ineligible to play sports for the remainder of that sentence. So, I mean, there are consequences, there are other things. But that we can do, I mean, I know we have a hard time making things, but at the same time, if we want it. Bring out the bunch of kids that. Play. It's okay to not follow the rule and just hide and sleep, and as long as you don't get caught, it's okay. Or do we actually? Have consequences to these things, like ma- mainly kids, people learn. I don't. You can't go, I can't go back on parents. I mean, I'm not. I, I have rules, like with the whole phone thing at home, but, but I get something, some kids don't have, maybe don't have that at home. But maybe it's, maybe if you make consequences so that eventually if they keep doing it. Like eventually you have to be prepared to. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So.
I think that they're caught the second time, the parents should, you know, pick up the phone.
Agreed, agreed. Agreed.
Black, white, second pack. I'm personally.
I agree.
I would ask all the parents, what's the, what's the most effective consequence for kids? Like for something that's stolen related, is it like punishing them, gouging the right?
It's parents who had to wait for, I mean, they don't love their next day, they're not gonna send them to try, let it go.
That's right, I wouldn't let them take them home. Yeah.
I send them to the grave.
If there's any consequence at home, I mean, this is like for a phone related thing, kids using the phone, they weren't supposed to, to. As parents, do you think rounding them or taking something away from them is more that makes sense?
Take sports away and I take the ball.
The punishment hasn't fit the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always feel like they're taking.
Yeah.
Take, so I just take.
Yeah. So, you said you looked up the cost of what it was to do some kind of the lockbox thing, is that even feasible, is the cost, um. In the millions?
There's pretty, what's that, three different types of cases for us, there's something called the new case. The one-time purchase. It has three-year manufacturer, they're clear cases that have stickers on the front, a pack of fifty of them, one unlocking station is seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Oh, that's true. That's not bad, so two.
Then, well, you're gonna think about all these kinds of unlocking the phone at the end of the day, so you might need to purchase additional unlocking. Adding them in.
Right.
Like, there's a little bit of a time commitment there, right? And then there's the common yonder couch, which they're about thirty dollars a piece. Um, and then there's the cell guard, which is the storage cabinets. And they hold about thirty-two, uh. Phones in them, and they're about two fifteen a piece, but you would want. Probably in multiple rooms, so that way kids could get them in and out of house, and then efficient. So you're not, it's not, I would think all sudden done, fully brand.
So it's doable, if we had to go there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's something. That you could do, if you were gonna get it for all.
So we would set them up. Was it gonna be a piece of.
Now, I think it's.
It could be if we needed to, okay.
Yeah, we had to do it. Yeah.
Do you want to go?
No, i- if you were to do boxing, like as far as liability goes. I give all our kids are putting their phones in there and something happens, I don't ask for one, I have no idea, ask for it in this building. Uh. Where's the liability in that? Because those phones are not cheap.
It would be the same liability as if they're, right now, they have to have in their backpacks. And when there's a fire bill, drug bill, or the fire bell goes off, you're not allowed to take your backpack with you, you're, you gotta get out of the building. So either way, those phones are in the building, there's gonna be liability somewhere. Whether they're in the kid's backpack, in their locker, in the hallway, or in a lockbox somewhere.
Especially for Asteroid.
Especially in Asteroid.
I, I think that this is kind of going in circles, I think like when you guys make a decision on whether they go in a bag or a box. Or they don't, or a backpack, the liability doesn't change, the liability is on the parents and that child. So if the parents decide to send their kid to school, knowing that that might go in a box. That's the risk that they take as a parent with that device, and that child takes, it's not on the.
Just like that.
So just tell the parents upfront, if this is the risk you take, if your kid breaks the rule once, it's out of their, their backpack into a bag, they break the rule twice, it's stored in a safe. They can get out, down, out of bed. With your concern about the phone.
The liability, keeping it on the phone, yeah.
I don't do like the bag with the box.
I, I say start with the backpack, bag, box, I like to.
The one thing that I think is really important, I think we really need to stress. Is, I think the kids are gonna adjust.
Yeah.
They're gonna learn, they're going to be fine.
Yeah.
The parents are gonna struggle, and I'm gonna struggle, if you know how many times I wanna text Wyatt, be like. Pick maple up, pick, pick up maple, you gotta get maple, so if someone like me, I'm gonna have to adjust, because I, I also need to adjust to it. It, yeah, I'm part of this, so. We need to really stress to the parents to call the office. We need to stress to the coaches, if there is a cancellation, that Matt has to get on the P A system. And to get ahold of the athletes that practice this cancer. I think the kids will be okay, but the parents, the coaches. Those, when games are canceled, that's where every, I can teach your trade hours a day, those kids are like, did you see that? Cancelled, oh my gosh, that's where kids are hanging up their phones all day, oh, I have to, my mom, and I have to call my mom. That is where the kids pick up their phones, ninety percent of the time, so we really need to stress on the parents. And, and the athletics, which Matt does a great job with, but that's really where this is gonna start. The kids will, the kids will be fine, once we educate them and work it.
All right, bring up a good point about. Sports. Teenage, you get updates on teenage, and not all the sport, well. Could be from rec sports as well, are not. Teachers or part of the school system, so they could be coaches at a different. Um. They don't work here, and they may post something at teen reach and. It's. I think, see what he mentioned, they get the updates to practice or meet here, or we're gonna, you know, field change. So if, if that's gonna be taken out of the picture, we need to think about the process.
There's gonna be more.
I don't think all that stuff too, but I will say, if something goes on team, I mean, team, so.
And then, and the parents can still use the team reaches, so they'll still have access to what the changes are, students can get it from Matt.
Right, right. And parents can still be tested or emailed during the day, it's just the students.
Well, I'll say, I'll say that, just, because I think we are going in circles, and we've also, I wanna say, and. I, I personally, and I know most of the people here. Will support whatever decision you make, we will support you and we will support the school, and I, as a teacher, will support it. What I, my favorite struggle right now is. And like everywhere, you're gonna have the ones, the families that follow the rules and the ones that do not, this is a law, it's not even a rule anymore. When they lie, and if you, so say you go to, every kid has to put their hole in the pouch. And when the kids that don't, don't, and they get caught with them, there needs to be a consequence to show. Support to the families and the children that do follow the rules, because. Right now, there is no support, so I'm sending my two kids coming in, saying, you're not having to put them in that bag, I'm not gonna hear about it. And yet Johnny and Billy don't, because they're the typical ones that never do what they're supposed to do. And, oh, yeah, just don't do it tomorrow, oh, we're gonna recover it very tomorrow, they're not, they're going to lie every day because there's no consequence for it. I'm not, I'm not supportive of suspensions or instant, but there has to be a drastic. Consequence and direct, like we get to search your bag now for your phone. Or something, and I don't know, but it's, it's, it gets to be too much for the ones that follow the rules a hundred percent of the time, and the ones that don't still get to do what they. And that would be the only thing that I struggle with, with all phones in all bags.
I would hate to put searching of backpacks on the teachers, that should be.
Oh, yeah, no, not a teacher, Betsy or whomever.
Okay, good. But, I would hate for you to have to do that, that was.
But, but it's on admin.
Yes.
Do that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for coming, uh, we definitely appreciate it. Uh, we wanted, we got the feedback that we're looking for, I think we just need to. Think it through, um, and I'm up with how we're going to.
We actually will have this tonight, I feel like. They need it tonight.
Well, I'm. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk through it, I guess.
Well, they can stay for the rest of it if they want to.
The rest of the meeting, the rest of the meeting is open to the public, but.
Yeah.
In terms of the.
Say, it's gonna be riveting.
Thank you. Thank you.
JR, you still recording?
What's the rest of the meeting called?
We're just gonna, we're gonna talk amongst ourselves and try to come up with what the call is.
Thank you. In most of these, they only.
Like on the first page, that I see, is that it should be. Uh, we have to add non-school issue. So, most tablets, laptops, correct?
No, it's already there, so if you have a second paragraph, for the purpose of this policy, personal communication device is defined as being non-district provided.
Okay.
Personal device, food, cell phone, laptops, tablets, you know, watches. So, that's, that's, I think that's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.
I mean, if it needs a snack.
Mark said.
So um. I mean, I I would say that the. In terms of feedback. The the broad, the broader definition. Is fine. So if we if we have additional. Those additional. Okay, so what happened with the.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think AirPods are as distracting as phones, and I get it if your phone isn't on, then what are you connected to? But who knows? Who knows what though, you know, and it's just a distraction and it's unhealthy. I would include all of that. And if we leave.
Yeah.
We leave out smart glasses, then we have those next. Yeah.
No, I think that all falls into that.
Yeah.
I mean, the next paragraph F four B under restrictions is not up for debate.
Right.
Yeah. So so while I'm talking about. So the the first paragraph under under section B is not up for debate. The second paragraph. Is up for debate. And I guess it depends on what we want to do about that.
So it sounds like that's putting it in the. Hands of the coaches, the supervisor, the staff that's attending that field trip.
And it's it's a field outside of the school day. So like the senior press and things like.
I see it happening. Against going to basketball game, soccer game.
What's this field trip? So I assume what you think.
But it doesn't count when the fifth grade goes over to Washington. They can't take their phones with.
I'm thinking like. This is, this is saved. Yeah, I mean, that's the. That's, I guess, where where. That's a little bit. That is a different line, sure. I mean, we definitely, we definitely are. We definitely have teams that look early for school from from school. You know, the. Extracurricular activities, cooperative, bookwork activities, field trips, activities outside of the school day. They're basically saying that's this policy is such a thing that. Is discretion based on coach or the teacher and all the charge. Are we, are we okay with the policy? I mean. That is what we do now. Are we seeing that shit use of um. Self or those types of devices on the on the bus on the way back and forth from soccer instead of front. Is that something that I need to address? Not around.
So yeah, maybe just keep it as it is.
Yeah. And until it's proven that we have to change it.
And then. The third paragraph of section B.
Already agreed to that.
That's something that we're sort of doing anyway, it sounds like. Or, yeah, or paragraph um. Turned off in a locker backpack or main bag. That's.
That's my thing too.
Concern about the whole bagging system thing. I think we're gonna get a lot of parents that are like. Screw you. You're not taking my kid's phone at the beginning of the day. And if we say. You know, these are the rules and even if we chose the the tiered approach, okay, well, then this is the rule. They keep it in their bags. If they break it, then it goes in the bag. They already know that. The bag thing, I don't know. I I appreciate the teachers' perspectives on it and maybe they're right. Because I'm I'm not here. I'm not a teacher, but it just. First of all, it seems like a drain on resources. We're gonna have to reconfigure the day, reschedule the day, figure out how the bags work. Okay, do we have them do it and they lock it themselves and leave it? Do we figure out who does it? How do we chase down the kids that inevitably lie about it? But again, I'm not an educator, so I don't know. That's just my feeling on it. That that's a. That's a tough.
I think the logistics of implementing basically. Mass operation of phones at the beginning of every day and then getting them back to the right person at the end of the day. Presents some challenges that. That, you know.
I think we all. Not agree with that?
Undertake until we. So it's.
And I think there's also something to be said for. Give again. If if we want to, I think that we need to educate the students and educate the parents about why this is, why this is. And. Give it getting them vested in it. Okay, so you know, this is the law. This is what we have to follow and we are treating you like, you know, this is your personal device and. You you have to follow the law. And if you don't, then there's a consequence, but. Right off the bat, being so militant about it, I just think it's gonna put a bad taste in everybody's mouth. And if we. Give them the benefit of the doubt, try it. What do you guys think as administrators?
I mean, I think we've always had the approach and we have something new like this. It's, I mean, obviously right now phones, but I don't see us putting a hammer down on the first time a kid comes into school. And has his phone out. I think it's. We try to have that softer approach in the beginning, just to, that's part of that educational.
Yes, yeah.
Saying like you're not allowed to have your phone. And um. But I I don't know, like, I mean, that's what we've done in the past and maybe that doesn't work.
That's huge.
Yeah.
That's huge.
Right. I think what's happened is that it's an inconsistency amongst the teachers.
Yes.
You know, and I think that's where like I feel like Matt's coming from. There's been so much inconsistency. He has to deal with this all day given his role of conflicts with kids and then. Teachers coming because he's in that role. That there's so much inconsistency. That. They can just uniform. I get that, but I I actually like the warning on take the phone device that are like. Get a few bags in each room.
Yep.
You put your phone in there and now you need to bring your phone to the office. At the end of the day, you go to the office to get. And then the teachers aren't putting ants on the phone. That's the thing. We put a few of these little devices to lock stuff down in the office, the section one. Like have that conversation and we have, and I think we need to say after warning in major for school day, I think. There needs to be a conversation with the parents. Like I feel like we don't just take it and the next time the parent has to go, I feel like what's going on.
Because it is.
I think there has to be a phone call home to the parent, let them know we had to take the phone for the day. The next time that this happens.
You will have to pick it up. Yes, agree.
I feel like that. And then we put a few of these devices in each room. I know it's a lot on the teachers. They just have to be on the same page. And then. You know, like.
I mean, could there be in that instance, could there be a. General email that gets sent to every parent that's just the same email that that Kim maybe could send out or.
Offense because when we thought maybe this would go through, we created a podcast on policy. We created. A big post for social media, individual daily posts.
Right, right.
Out, email already written to the family of frequently asked questions.
Not that, that's what I'm talking about. If the student has their. Phone taken away first time today, I have to put it in a bag and take it to the office. Now my mom or my dad has been notified, but instead of putting that on the teacher, because they're gonna have, they have so much anyway. Is there just a general email that says we took your kid's phone away? It happens again, you're gonna have to pick it up. That Kim could just hit it up and it goes.
And I I think that's a good idea, but if it's a large volume, you're making fifteen phone calls.
Exactly.
That like that, but.
It's not simple.
But we could do that, but not every family has email, trust their email. I think that connection with the school is important. So. I feel like the teacher should come up to do, we had to do it, or or Karen can say, I'll take it over, but there has to be something put in our message system to say that this happened. Phone call, message hole, like maybe we left the voice message and then we fall off with the email or something.
I'm just trying to figure out, make it really simple that that.
I do think.
Theater's gonna be making fifty phone.
If anyone checked their email, I would agree with that, but I'm not sure everything or possibly no.
Okay.
But I think most, I mean, we could do that. Mass email to blind C C, but.
Well, not a mass one, just to.
No, you, yeah, but you could blind C C, like you can send one, put all the blind C C pairs.
So basically, it's like. Your student, your student has bought, he's in their phone today, since you're moving, they share it. Next time happens, you're allowed to.
We could do a message. We just put a message will be delivered to the parent. It's an email, it's a.
I'm just a. And then you can decide when they see how busy it is. It might only.
Oh, you're right. I mean, if the volume is high, then yes, if it's low, then a phone call is just.
Yeah.
Also, you may have a better sense of. What the best, how you how to get the best.
So we can. They may only get responses from email sometimes, but who knows? Okay.
Uh, exceptions, these are the ones that are written in the line.
We can't change it if you want to.
So section D is weird, right? It says consequences violations. Then it has this paragraph of a copy that's.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to the students policy. I would have, I would say strike you that entirely.
What is um, the the school reserves the right to monitor, inspect, cover, review students' personal electronic devices subject to limitations? Of ours, they want to ninety seventy. If there's resource position suspicion, do we do that? No.
I don't, you know, I'm searching through kids' phones if we think they violated the board.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. So I agree. I agree with taking that paragraph right out. Does anybody have any opposition to that? No.
I I think that. There's certain circumstances where. Where searching a kid's phone may be appropriate. I would, I would say, I would say that the police are involved.
So I'm gonna share this with you and they show, but we don't.
If you have to go do a phone search, the police would be there.
And it would be probably a title nine issue.
Yes, okay, that that's gotta go.
And they're, yeah, and there's some.
I don't wanna do that because I don't look at things that I might get trouble from.
You can't unsee it.
There are things, right, like that could be in trouble.
I could be in trouble for actually looking at.
Yeah, the idea is we are. You know, if we think a kid brought a gun to school, we will search their back.
Oh, sure.
You know, is doing something inappropriate on on Snapchat, we're not getting involved in that. If it's something that raises the level of criminal matter, we'll make the proper withdrawal, but I don't think that schools should be getting.
Agreed.
Uh, okay, uh, so in terms of consequences, I guess this is the. This is where.
If we're not having anything sent to us, so just so you know, like if our kid says, let me see that, we're not saying, oh, please set it's like. Not that.
Yeah. No, I, yes. To make it clear, right?
And if something inappropriate did get sent.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So maybe first offense is confiscation. Confiscation.
But in one of those bags, like that's where we get the bags.
Yes, that's that would be the cost, confiscation.
I mean, we, we can, if we wanna leave it as as written, confiscation can take whatever form the administrator decides.
Straight on.
I I just wanted to share, I would just say confiscation now is just. Phone and and it's on my desk.
Oh, I like the idea of the student, you put it in a bag, the student takes the bag to the office. And then you have no liability on that phone because it's in that.
Yeah. When you say confiscation, that's how it's been in the.
We may not have these like at the start of the school year. Or the student brings it down to the office, puts it in a ball, whatever that has to be, but I like the idea of the student having all of that liability.
I I have. I have concerns, not just from a like a liability perspective in terms of like, you know. They're expensive devices. We don't wanna be in, you know, on the hook for something like, you know, you're open to that, right? Right, so. But I also have concerns of, you know. Maybe students are claiming that while it was in Mr. Solly's possession, somebody accessed their social media, you know. I think that our, the way in which we effectuate confiscation has to be. Has to, has to be structured to protect the district as well, right? So it, you know, we're, if we're gonna be taking possession of somebody's phone. To be in a way that is, that ensures that we are not then uh. Being. Accused of doing something with it or or destroying it or or something like that, that. You know, there's, there's gotta be some way to figure out. And I think the, you know, the bag makes sense. If you know, the student is is sort of um responsible for putting it in the bag, it remains locked in the bag. You know, at least we have, at least that's one step in that direction, right? Um, you know, and but I, I do think that before they put it in the bag.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think. I think it, I mean. Right, theoretically, it's powered off already. To the extent that, you know, we're taking the phone. Be cognizant of the, of what, of what that, you know, sort of opens us up to in terms of.
We should add to number one, though. The my parents will be contacted.
And parents will be notified, yes.
Parents will be notified.
Yep, I love that.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Are you saying that? If 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 kids in the classroom. The teacher sees this, you tell the kid, take the student, take the phone. By themselves to the office.
The teacher will have the bags.
Walk back.
Right, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the other.
Well, because the other reason why is because even Heather had told me last year, her her son, he said. Because what I want is if, you know, if they take my phone, or I'll, I'll give them the fruit phone.
Gonna see it. You're gonna see every.
And and I think.
Kids are gonna be kids, so we're gonna expect all.
So they'll put their old phone in the bag, take it to the office, and then they get caught with their other one, and then it's, then it's mom picks it up or down. Even if it's in one day.
There shouldn't be a second offense in one day because if it's a confiscation, if it's in the thing for the entire day, they have to come down and get it on law.
They give us the burner.
It's gonna be a whole market.
It is, it'll be a new market for like twenty dollar phones.
Look, we can't.
I like that first, first offense, though.
I do, I like the second offense as well. Yeah, same thing.
That's a disciplinary referral will be written with it. What are we?
Write it in our system and not what.
Yeah.
Document that a kid has done this preferred to them, so that way if it happens, we have documentation in our system.
Disciplinary, but we can write disciplinary documentation.
I think we just do that.
I just gotta be written up. The the first defense will be written up at all.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And it'll, it'll just be an almah, so we'll have that record of.
So we get rid of the second sentence.
Yeah.
Third, I don't know. Use our student, student contact.
The um, there there was a, somebody suggested a, what was the third offense? Well, if I wrote down what they were talking about. Third offense, the phone will be placed. In the office, the beginning of the, or in the box and like bag, whatever, at the beginning of the day. Um, for ten consecutive days. Each time, and you can start over. And if you get caught with your phone and it's in the bag, the ten or box for ten days. And you get it back and on that eleventh day, you can find again, we start over. So you can go through this with the same student for months.
Are we? Does it make more sense to just say after a certain amount of times, you're just not allowed to bring.
Yeah, and such secret events, code of conduct will be implemented, including enough to.
Yeah.
Uh, nonchalant.
I will, I will.
I think that that makes sense. It does.
I will say that I, I, I don't think that, you know, that we need to be thinking in terms of. Suspensions for kids. The value of that, that that is when I think we should be saving those for, for.
Trying to keep kids in class.
Exactly.
And and the whole education piece about it. I think that there is a. Like compassionate, I guess, component to this where we're like, we, because because it is an addiction. And it is a comfort thing for a lot of kids and a lot of parents. And so us presenting this as like. We get it. This is a huge transition. This is a massive change. You know, the parents here tonight, remember when you were able to smoke in school, not not rule about people like. It's a massive change and we get that it's gonna be. States and you know, people are gonna get caught smoking in the. It's a massive change, and we get that it's gonna be hard, people are gonna make mistakes, and you know, people are gonna get caught smoking in the bathrooms and.
That took a long time.
Well, we start, that's how we started last.
Right, yeah.
Right, we were really holding that policy unless some of us said.
Yeah.
You know, it, it worked.
Yeah.
Was working, kids were doing it. Then see, like you said, once they can get away with it.
Yeah.
In the class, then it was, then it became, as they said, just little by little by little, so. We, we, we did do that educational piece because we realized that.
Yeah.
We realized that it was gonna, they was addicted, and you're not gonna be able to, like, beat them off in two minutes.
Yeah. But now it's there's all.
Yeah, but we can still, we can still, you know, the, the, but I, I think what, like we said, we need to. Get the staff involved too, to be, they have to be, and like, and it's including us, right? Like, like, I don't wear, I got rid of. My watch, I'm trying to get, you know, be good on my phone, because they're gonna look at us and say the same thing.
Teachers.
And I get it.
Yeah. It's gonna be a transition, but I think that even the groundwork that was laid last year is gonna help.
Gonna.
I think that the, the more education and support we give and like understanding to the parents, like. Yeah, it stinks that our hands are tied and, because it does, it's.
There's a newspaper everywhere right now, so you happen to know about it, yeah. It's everywhere.
We have some, we have some bailments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was your, your suggestion on number three again?
Um, subsequent, subsequent offenses, code of conduct will be implemented, including and not to, not being offered.
Yeah, so we refer to code of conduct, yeah.
Cause the whole thing is to have them focused in school, so they can't be here.
Yeah, no, I don't like that.
Yeah, that does it, the law.
Yeah, right.
And it, and you know, our, our code of conduct. For it's pretty broad latitude, it should be, address whatever the issue is.
Yeah.
In a way that.
You have to graduate sanctions, and there's all kinds of stuff around code of conduct that you have to put in place, you can't just go to suspension.
Yeah.
Plus, it's a safety thing, right?
Yeah.
But I do like having, I, I do think having concrete. Consequences that are easily understood by students for even the first or second thefts. Is of value, so that they know exactly what's going to happen. If they buy that, that makes sense.
And also reassuring the parents of safety measures that are already put in place, right? Yes, true, good call. Right, I really liked what's, somebody had said about. For calls are.
You know, we can use some methods, we just can't pull stop, stop, you can't be out to the.
I was gonna try to say something, but I.
Yeah, I mean, right, and that's why we haven't, she was asked.
Yeah.
For, but we can clearly, you know, have those.
We can use some for a passive. And to the point of. If it's in a lockbox in the office or in their lockers, if there is an emergency, they're not going to either place, so it's.
Right. But Jen, with the liability question, it doesn't mean whether. Their phones are in their backpacks or in a lockbox somewhere, it doesn't matter, because they're not taking them with them when the fire alarm goes off anyway.
They're not.
No, but I, I think there's a difference between, between like us saying, okay, you have to, everyone's gotta put their phone in their locker or in this. Specific spot, and us taking in our thoughts, so I think that's a bit of a difference.
Talking liability with prime access, should we check with prime access, see what they have for suggestions on.
They think this is ever not viable.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it is enforceable, but it's.
Say it all you want. Not viable for a car accident.
It's a phone call, just to.
You know, we do have to. Yeah.
We can get prime access call.
Yeah.
See if there's some insurance.
And maybe they have some input on this.
I think, you know, uh, Blair's sort of suggestion was, in, in terms of messaging, is to say like. Look, um, you understand that this is the potential consequence if child brings a device to school, new child uses the device while in school. You understand that if you allow your child to bring this, that device to school, that you, that, that. You know, so that's, that may happen.
Yeah.
And if that happens, that, you know, that's on you for allowing them to bring the, the device to school.
Yeah.
I mean, that goes, that, that only goes so far, but I, you know, I, I think just messaging like, look, this is what could potentially happen. So if you're not comfortable with that, with that, then don't allow your child to bring it to school.
So we have her frequently asked questions, what are communicated devices, are given during the school day? What is considered a communication device? Are there exceptions to this policy? How can I reach my child during an urgent situation urgency? How can I reach my child after school for school sponsored events? What happens if student violates this policy? Where should the student keep their device? If my student's device is stolen or lost, the school district is not responsible for any. Lost damage or theft of personal communication devices. On request, owners may provide the district to provide that for the students, we took that, actually. So we just kind of said, we can add in there, it suggests devices to be left at.
Yeah, right, I like that part in the thing, the suggestion is leave it at home, if it's coming to school, it's left in their backpack, gets found, yeah. I like those questions too, the first, the ask questions, that's great.
Are we, what do we, like, to educate the parents, other than. Uh, it, going out in emails and whatever.
So we have this uh, that we'll send out an all passage.
Okay.
On email that has the, I think, clues, five cats, email policy.
Perfect.
For our, and we're gonna put that all on our website, so it's there, and then we have all of this stuff ready to go. In social media, so each.
Yeah.
So we have that, we can hold a, a meeting on.
If you send something home, like with elementary students?
All, all students.
This will go, high school kids don't bring stuff home, they just.
Oh, send, no, we were gonna send it personally home.
Oh, I got you.
We were going to send it ahead of the.
Sure, should, would you follow up, wow, we got, you know, the first week of school or not?
I mean, we can follow up whatever, we can actually have a meeting with the parents, you know, if we want, like, come here about.
I mean, yeah, but you know how that goes, it's.
I know.
Get the ones that showed up tonight are the ones that have come to that meeting.
Or, you know, the other thing we can do is, um, have a quick one at the beginning of open house, right? We do get a lot of people at open house.
Great, I, somebody there just to talk about.
Good house, yeah, let's cover these quick.
Yeah, quick things, and, um, you know, because we, now we do open house, where they all go into the high school.
Right, right, right.
We have a little bit of an introductory and answer some questions and provide, like, there's some statements around, you can go and get some information. That could be just, like we. Talk about, here are the.
So, could a frequently asked question to be, why is this law here? What, like, why is this? And just basically give them, like, the proper research. Showing.
So we put like on our social media, I mean, about like. Kids, the amount of taxes they receive, I can just pull that data off that, the researcher.
Yeah, so I feel like some parents don't even know that, they think, oh, you know, they're not. Putting two and two together, they might think that the state is just.
Right.
Yeah, we're just, you know, making some.
This is good.
I'm, alright, so, I mean, I guess. We have. We, we have the, the, the sort of outline of the policy here that we have made a couple of changes to, is. Is everybody comfortable with what it looks, or what we just put in place that comes with the.
Well, it still doesn't, we have to address that, like, if.
But a big work.
Miss.
Yeah.
That's a, this is for those students, so they're actually are dismissed. That would be their valve, because they are dismissed.
That doesn't count for their school day?
Well, it's, it, they're in school for the day, but they're dismissed early.
Well, that still counts as their voluntary student day.
Yes.
Yeah, because it's more than half a day.
The way this is in here is outside of the school day, that's.
But could we say any further dismissal for a school sanctioned event?
So Steve can go back at school and say, ah, I get to use my phone.
Yeah, so can the basketball team when they leave.
Yeah.
Well, that's, maybe we'll give more kids to participate.
But they leave early to the playbook at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, that's, that, that's exactly what bringing up.
Right, yeah.
I feel like. Better as a parent, obviously, knowing where they are.
Yeah, they're, they're traveling.
And they're not coming.
Cause the way the policy is written, that doesn't include that, so we need to break that in the policy, my only call. So, so, give me, give me one. You're saying. That students that are leaving the school grounds.
For the day.
That's, you think that they should not be able to, or that they should. No, no, I just said it should include in our policy, whatever, whatever you decide, I don't see.
Joe's saying that when they leave at one o'clock, that school isn't officially over.
Yeah.
Right.
But so we would have to write something in to say like, if you're leaving. Yeah, if you're leaving for an athletic event or whatever, then that is your official day.
Outside of the school.
So for you.
So all I have to do, if, if we are, if the intention is to say any student who has left the building, or.
Then dismissed, dismissed for the day.
That, that, uh, that if you, if you've been dismissed as part of an official school activity, not a field trip. You know, then, then that is the end of your destruction, you know.
Yes, they're not.
For purposes of the policy.
If they're not returning to school for the.
We can just put I B sport.
We just take out outside of the school day, because that's the part that's limiting.
Well.
On the.
And then if we're gonna do that, then we should get rid of the work field trips. Cause we don't want that to be shared. Alright, so if we're seeing extracurricular, co-curricular activities, or other activities outside of the school. Or, or other out city, activities outside of the school, period. Shall, shall abide, and get, so get rid of day.
Get rid of day.
Get rid of field trips. And then.
You say about field trips.
And then we could just say.
If those are going to apply, the, the school's policy ban is going to apply on field trips.
Yeah.
We can put it here, the school day includes an experience passing time to recess and field trips.
Yes.
Yeah, cause field trips have been an issue with self bots.
For us, yeah.
Yes.
So take off field trips, no bad, take out gay, you got like that in paragraph two, paragraph one, the guilty man and the comment and field trips.
Perfect.
These previous messages. Yeah.
Trying to make sure, yeah.
Yeah. So, um. I think it makes sense for us to. To bypass the first reading, second reading. And vote on this policy tonight, unless anyone has any objection to that.
I'm good with that, it also says in there that it has to be reviewed prior to April first, so. Yeah.
I, I think.
Try it April first, or April first.
We'll say anyway, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's anything in false in this, in the law that dictates it first.
Oh, okay, that's what just, okay.
No.
That's what this says.
So when it says for policy change, just put a period.
Yeah, cause it just says annually, you know, it's the statute.
So literally, policy in collaboration with parents, teachers. But it should say the word.
Well.
I think, I think what they're saying in this is we should have a meeting like this every year, but I don't think, when the law, we don't have to.
So I'm supposed to believe that the parents and the teachers are gonna report any recommendation to the board on the April first.
So you need to have another meeting like this, is that necessary?
It just says such policy shall be developed in collaboration with the school, parents, teachers shall be reviewed in. That's all it says.
So I think we just.
So we can make whatever rule or why, other than, you know, we review a lot of policies annually.
We could just put.
Come in our packets.
This policy will be reviewed yearly.
Highly likely. Black, and I go to review it.
In the same way.
In the same way we should have a policy.
Exactly, yeah, we could take all that other stuff out, and I don't think we need to have this every year.
No, but I would suggest that we put it on the agenda for like our, you know, our first or second meeting after school starts, so that we can get just a. Update on how things are going, and maybe the changes that need to.
Agreed.
Yeah, Jay, I, I agree with that, I mean, because I wanted to say earlier, I talked with Trey, uh, today, he, yesterday, he went to an A nine meeting. And met with a lot of other people from around, and I think it was Manchester who passed their policy Monday.
It's possibly not in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, they're their first meeting.
But, but, but what, what we can do, or you can do, is review that, other policies. And maybe take and say something that we forgot about, or looks like a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be impossible for us to anticipate every cert, everything, so we do the best we can, we make adjustments.
Field series, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there, so I guess one thing I would note is there's gonna be some discretion. And on your part. Uh, for a couple of different plans. Number one, what. Form notification when parents takes, you know, number two, how confiscation and protecting those phones and all the stuff.
I prefer, we can do it, we don't touch it.
And, and I, that, that sounds like a good idea, you know, we, that, that's. Gonna take some logistics in place for us to achieve that, but ultimately, that's probably best, that's what.